I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the regular session of the mayor and council of the city of Bisbee County of Cochise and state of Arizona to be held on Tuesday, September 5th, 2017 at 7:00 PM in the Bisbee Municipal Building, 118 Arizona Street, Bisbee, Arizona. Ms. Coronado, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Anna Klein?
Here.
Councilmember Joan Hansen?
Here.
Councilmember Frank Davis?
Here.
Mayor David M. Smith?
Present.
Councilmember Bill Higgins?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Douglas Dunn?
Here.
Councilmember Gabe Lindstrom?
Here.
City staff, Robert Smith, interim city manager, Ashley Coronado, city clerk, Carrie Bagley, finance director, Alberti Chavez, police chief, George Castillo, interim fire chief, Britt Hanson, city attorney.
Thank you, ma'am. For our moment of silence, I would like us to remember all of those that have been so tragically affected by Hurricane Harvey as well as those that are in the path of Hurricane Irma. So if we take just a minute and reflect on that. Thank you. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thanks so much, everybody, for being here. Mr. Hanson, would you mind introducing your new associate that will be joining us occasionally?
Sure. Thank you. Stand up. Christine Roberts, our new deputy county attorney, has been with us a total of three weeks now, I think, something like that.
Yep, this is my fourth week.
A fourth week, so she now knows everything she needs to know. So if you can call her on anything, just bypass me. Anyway, we're very happy to have Christine here. She's got a terrific background, not only in law but in insurance as well, and is going to be a huge asset to our office. For the next foreseeable future, let's put it that way, Christine will not be covering Bisbee for the most part, except for public records. We'd like to want her to get her feet with public records because it's always such a joy, so.
Yes.
Anyway, thanks Christine for being here.
Thanks, Christine. And this is her second meeting with the city today. So we're going to jump right in here. We have a sign-up sheet for the business before us, for people to speak. The only one that I see signed up for call to public is Mr. Tom Nelson, so...
What if I was late, I can't sign up?
Yes, sir, you may.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry?
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
We'll need you to literally sign that. Thank you, sir.
I'm Tom Nelson, city of Bisbee, and provided... Oh, look at this. It doesn't go down by itself, though?
Yes.
Oh, okay. But it's a good idea. Anyways, I just wanted to let everybody know about a couple of events that are coming up, provided that they stay on the consent agenda and that we have the proper permitting involved. So Rotary Club is doing Vintage Bisbee on October 7th, 4:00 to 7:00 PM, City Park. It's wine and food and fun, as I like to put it this year. And the other thing that we have coming up is in September 29th, it's a Friday night, and this is a fundraiser for Community Synergy Solutions and our upcoming Eco-ASIS, which you may have seen, the greenhouse has gone up out in Tin Town, and that's going to be an extension of the farmer's market, training grounds, and more than likely a small cafe, just a grab-and-go kind of thing, salads and sandwiches. And so, September 29th, 7:00 PM, Club Kilimanjaro, and we have a concert going on, which is Carol and Toronto opening, El Trigo, which is like a Panthers and a Tornow and Becky Reyes and et cetera. And then the Montoya Clan is the headliner. They'll be doing their mariachi act. It's really, really good, so if you can make it up for that, there'll be posters around town, and you can buy tickets for Vintage Bisbee at C... Sorry, vintagebisbee.org, and you can get tickets for the concert at csscbisbee.org. And I thank you guys in advance, as long as there aren't any questions, I'm available if there are.
Thanks, sir. Is it Harris?
Yes, Arthur Harris.
Arthur Harris. Did you want to speak at call to the public, sir, or did you have a specific...
You know, I got one notice for the first meeting about the CCNH situation, the rezoning, and I live right behind there.
Right.
This is the first time I came to the meeting. I'm just curious about what's going on.
Right. So do you want to speak on that? I believe that's item three.
It doesn't say rezonate to what?
Here's what the mayor is asking, is item number three, on the rezoning, is a public hearing, so if you want to speak at that time, or speak on that subject, you should probably speak when that agenda item is called.
Okay, that's fine.
Rather than a call to the public, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, of course. You've got to go in your order, right?
I'm just trying to clarify because it wasn't written down, sir. I wanted to give you whatever you needed.
I appreciate it. I'm not used to coming in anymore. Used to, a long time ago.
All right, sir. Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to accounts payable.
I move that we pay accounts payable in the amount of $359,587.76.
I second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Do we have questions, council?
I just have the general question. If we could, I don't know if it's possible, but some of them just are so vague, you know, I don't know if we can put a little more details maybe in some of the expenses? Like, there's always a lot that says like business or lodging. I mean, is there a way in the future that we can get maybe a little more specifics or no?
Well, typically, you have the ability certainly to get hold of finance and to ask them prior, you know, item number such and such, what is that? Because they won't necessarily have that today with them, but they will have that if you shoot them an email.
But if they're writing this up, is what I'm saying. But when they're writing this up, they can't just add a little...
I don't know if they can or not, but we'll take that under advisement and see if they can do it.
Okay.
You bet. But they can't answer, you know, anything ahead of time, so. Anything else, sir? Okay. We have a motion, we have a second to pay accounts payable. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. We have a consent agenda, which is rather lengthy, and so I will read it. Consent agenda. Item A: Approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on May 10th, 2017, at 5:30. B: Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on May 16th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. C: Approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on May 23rd, 2017, at 5:30 PM. D: Approval of the minutes of the work session of mayor and council held on June 6th, 2017, at 5:30 PM. E: Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on June 6th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. F: Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on June 20th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. G: Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on July 5th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. H: Approval of the minutes of the special session of mayor and council held on July 18th, 2017, at 6:00 PM. I: Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on July 18th, 2017, at 7:00 PM. J: Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on August 1st, 2017, at 7:00 PM. K: Approval of the minutes of the regular session of mayor and council held on August 15th, 2017. L: Approval of the resignation of Richard Jorgensen from the Parks and Recreation Committee. M: Approval of the appointment of Theodore Ruff to the Community Sustainability Commission. N: Approval of the appointment of Tori Child to the community, I'm sorry, the Committee on Disability Issues. O: Approval of the appointment of Leslie Johns to the Committee on Disability Issues. P: Approval of the appointment of Jesse Smith to the Committee on Disability Issues. Q: Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by the Community Synergy Solutions Corporation for an event to be held at Club Kilimanjaro, 33 Subway Street, Bisbee, Arizona, on Friday, September 29th, 2017, from 4:00 PM to 11:59 PM. R: Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by the Bisbee Council and the Arts and Humanities, DBA, Bisbee Mining and Historical Museum, for an event to be held at the Bisbee Masonic Lodge, 89 Main Street, Bisbee, Arizona, on Saturday, September 30th, 2017, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. S: Approval of a special event liquor license application submitted by the Bisbee Rotary Charities, Inc., for an event to be held at City Park, 62 Brewery Avenue, Bisbee, Arizona, on Saturday, October 7th, 2017, from 4:00 PM to 7:59 PM. Council, do we have any of these items that need to be pulled for any reason for questions or clarification? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the consent agenda items A through S.
I second it. Thank you. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of approving consent agenda A through S signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you. Are we... Council, I'm sorry, are we not... Is this indicating a public hearing?
Yeah, this needs to be a public hearing.
Right. I don't... I'm missing... I miss... I agree it does. Do we need this explained prior to the public hearing?
I'm sorry?
Should we have this explained prior to the public hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Before you open it for the public hearing, staff report...
Please, thank you.
Mr. Charlie is here on behalf of the applicant.
Absolutely. All right. And that would be Mr. Joe, a man of many hats, but in this case, planning and zoning. Thank you, sir.
Okay. This is a application to rezonate the property at 1556 Naco Highway. I think everybody's familiar with the property, it's formerly CCH group home.
Can everybody here in the back row? All right. There you go. Would you speak into those? We do have some people here that are very interested in this.
Okay. We have an application to rezonate the property at 1556 Naco Highway, a former CCH group home that was there. Their current... What used to be CCH, where I understand it is now called Premier Alliances, and they're the applicant. This came before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the 17th of August, where it passed 4 to 0 with one abstention, and they recommended passing it on to mayor and council for approval. The property...
Go ahead.
The property currently is... Has a special use permit. It's zone R1, but it has a special use permit that allows the business activity, light manufacturing, as well as the group home. And it matches with the San Jose area goals and policies that are contained in the general plan. I listed them, I could read them, but I think you guys have seen the same thing.
Do we... Mr. Ward, do we know what their plans are for this particular building and site? I'm asking because we have people in the audience specifically...
There are no concrete plans, as far as I know, but Mr. John Charlie is here to represent Premier Alliances.
All right. Excellent. Excellent. Then we will ask him in just a minute.
And to conclude, I'm recommending that the rezoning be passed by you guys.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. What I would like to do with this, and I'm going to open the public hearing, and ask for those that are for and those...
Mayor, before you do that, could I just make a comment, please?
If it's appropriate, yes.
My comments are all just... Could you go through what the limitations or restrictions, there were three things that could not be put on the zoning to C1?
My recommendations were... I've got everything backwards now. Here we go. That you pass it with conditional approval, subject to the following conditions, that applicants provide the city with the acceptance of conditions in waiver claims form, and that they provide a waiver of claims resulting from the request, claims from taking from the requested zoning, and that the more important one is to limit the potential uses to preclude restaurants, taverns, hotels, motels, lumberyards, and warehouses. And the Planning and Zoning Commission had precluded lumberyards and warehouses, and I added those other ones at the recommendation of some neighbors, and I agree with that.
I'm going to open the public hearing and ask for those that speak in favor of the zoning request, and I'd like to start with Mr. Charlie to please come up as the petitioner and provide us with the background. Thank you, sir, and welcome.
Thank you, mayor and council. John Charlie, representing Premier Alliances, Director of Business Development for Premier Alliances Incorporated. We are asking this evening for our property at 1556 to be rezoned from R1, which is residential, to C3. Primarily, we are interested in activating this property. It's unfortunate, it's been empty for several years now, and our number-one goal is to put it to use. And we thought this time, the best way to do that is to begin by rezoning the property to more properly reflect what the special use permit already allows and perhaps for potential use in the future. The property at one point was being represented by a realty company, it no longer is on the market. We are actively searching for business ideas, both for ourselves and others who may rent the property.
So the intent is that you're going to hold on to the property and either put a business in there or rent it out for a business?
And I will... It's possible that the property could be put back onto the market for sale.
Okay.
Yes, all those are options.
I just wanted that, so that we would know that. Okay. Council, have any questions at this point? All right, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here speaking in favor of the rezoning change? Then those that are speaking in opposition to the zoning change, do we have anybody speaking in opposition to the zoning change? You're signed up. Please, please. Provide your name again for the record.
My name is Arthur Harris. I was raised in Bisbee. I live on Number 4 Manzanita. That place is right behind, that's in my backyard. I mean, we're at CCH, that's fine. He's wrong when he says it's been empty for seven years. It hasn't been empty for seven years. It's only been like maybe two years.
Okay.
All right. And it's fine and dandy. My deal is this. I was raised in that house since I was 13 years old. I've been back here four years, and that's my little paradise. And if they want to put a rehab or drug thing in there, whatever, I don't want to go for that, because I don't want to be looking at my backyard. All I'm concerned is that anything from 9 to 5 or 8 to 6, I don't care about. But in a residential neighborhood, you don't need some late-night things going on. And I'm just telling you this from me, from my point of view. I'm 66 years young, okay? And this fellow here didn't tell you the truth. I've been back here four years, and that place has only been closed a couple of years.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
And I was raised here, I graduated in 1969, and if you... And I want to know recourse. If you guys want to ram something down somebody's throat, let me know.
Thanks.
Because I want to know my rights, that's all I'm going to say.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Weaver?
I'm going to give you a copy of what I... The statement I prepared, because I was under the impression I had five minutes.
You have three minutes, yeah.
And I would love for you to waive that, being as how I did not receive proper notice for the P&amp;Z meeting and did not get an opportunity to speak at that meeting.
Right. We're actually not going to waive it, but please proceed.
Well, I'll read as much of it as I can get read of it. I live at 69 DoK Street in Old Bisbee, in a residential neighborhood overlooking brewery gulch, so I am very familiar with how an impact... How a business district can impact a residential neighborhood. I know there are rules that govern that, but those rules where business are concerned tend to be widely interpreted, often ignored. I recently bought a property to avoid the impact of an area zone for business. I like listening to birds and spade-footed toads, not loud music and festivals. I like to smell honeysuckle, not roasting coffee fermenting hops, cigarette smoke, exhaust from tour carts, perfumes from hotel laundry dryer sheets. I am now nearly finished building my dream home in this place, and it's rated R1 residential. Many of the neighbors are still on one-acre lots with chickens, rabbits, even burrows. It's on the map in your packet if you have a copy of that proposal. All the neighboring properties, which, by the way, you may notice are on large residential lots, private lots, the nearest businesses serve the local community, are closed at night. They are Farmers Insurance, Arizona Water, right next to Tacho's Tacos, about a half-mile north down the road. I was very shocked to discover that P&amp;Z had met, voted to recommend, that this facility, which is right across from my water meter, go from special use to C3. I would have been at that meeting, but the notice I was supposed to get was addressed to the former owner. Because I've been told the city's database was so out of date, many of my neighbors within 300 feet received no notice whatsoever, if they're telling you the truth, and I believe they are. I did waive my right to demand a second P&amp;Z meeting, which I now regret because I thought I would have more than three minutes to discuss this. So now it's in your hands. Does it go from R1 special use for the handicap, virtually zero impact on the neighborhood, to C3 commercial, which would allow so many things, it boggles my mind? And keep in mind, only 200 of those feet are on Naco Highway of that property. 680 feet of that property go all the way down into the neighborhood, and that's the vast majority of the property, and you're talking about rezoning the whole property, not just the front 100 feet. There are a lot of things that could happen. I'm very concerned that it be a hotel, a restaurant, or bar. I've been assured that that would not happen. I wouldn't want a bowling alley or a drug rehab there either. They can be just as offensive with noise or cigarette smoke. And I've also got the feeling that someone is interested in that property, that there may be a pending offer on the property, contention on this rezoning. I don't know. I'm worried that there's a specific use someone's interested in that they're not divulging. A methadone clinic, drug rehab, would patients come and go of their own free will? Would they sit outside, smoke cigarettes all day? Would whatever happens there be a security risk to people living by?
Okay, ma'am.
Could inmates be kept there? I don't know. It would be nice to know how rezoning C3 might affect the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
I believe it's a noble thing. There are zoning laws that protect individuals from incursions, a better financed business.
Time is up, please.
If anyone's connected to this request is aware of a specific use planned, and they aren't saying that it would be contrary to the intent of the zoning laws to keep the neighbors in the dark.
Tammy Birch? Three minutes, please, Ms. Birch.
It's going to be brief.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Tammy Birch, Ward 3. I live at 215 Hereford Road. I walked from the end of the property to my driveway, and it was like 55 steps, so I think it's within 300 foot. And I did not get a notice. The name's on the list. My name wasn't even on the list. I've been in the house for 12 years, so I don't know why I didn't get a notice, but that's beside the point. I want to thank the mayor, the council, city employees to be here, and all the concerned citizens in Bisbee. Thank you. This is close to my home. It's... I go walk-by it all the time, and my neighbors are retired people, my neighbors are teachers, EMTs, Border Patrol. We treasure our quiet neighborhood. I mean, the county vehicles go by there all the time, every day. But I just want to know, have the security... I'm a hard-working person and volunteering a lot. I just would like to have my evenings quiet. I would like to know if possibly there wouldn't be alcohol or things that would interrupt my peace and my neighbors' peace at night. Lighting, maybe, might be changed there on the corner. Noise level might be different. So I'm just respectfully requesting, out of my curiosity, I'd like to know what's going to be there. I'm not saying I'm... You know, if it's going to be a nursing home, great. I mean, but I just would like it to be something positive for the community, and especially for my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mary Langham?
Yes, ma'am. I'm Mary Langham, and this is my...
Just wait. Pardon me. Now you can go. You're on TV, and so we need to make sure that you're there when you start talking. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay. I'm Mary Langham, and this is my husband, Bob Langham. Bob has... My husband has Parkinson's, otherwise he would be up here speaking to you all for our family.
Sure.
We live on Manzanita Street, and we are the oldest neighbors... We are the oldest people on that street, except for Art, who came in here and spoke to you first. We've been there 35 years in that house. We butt up directly with CCH, and we have the longest property line with them, so it directly affects us. When we moved in, Verhals Halfway House was there, and that was a long time ago. But anyway, Verhals moved out, and they're out in that other location, but they used to get our house confused with their house, and they would come into our property, in our house, when we were raising our first six kids, and we'd have to throw them out of our house. So I know what it's like to have a rehab facility right next door to us. It is not good. Not that we didn't get along with them, we did. And CCH came in, and an absolute wonderful neighbors to have. Wonderful. But I must say, the gentleman that said that this place has been empty, I don't know why he's saying that, because there's been... They've been renting the property. There's been people in there. There's been businesses in there since... I don't know. It seems like it's just been a few months. But whoever has that property has just let the growth of the weeds, you know, stand sky-high. They're not taking care of it. I don't have a lot of faith in the gentleman that came up and spoke with you. There's got to be a monetary thing going on here that is, you know, the underlying current of why they're wanting this to happen. But we don't want a drug rehab right next door. This is a residential community. Please, all of you that are up here, would you want a drug rehab right next to you? We shouldn't have to move out of the city limits in order to maintain the life that we've had for 35, 40 years. It's not fair. You know, it isn't fair. It's not... It's not fair to Art, it's not fair to me, it's not fair to the other people that are living close, that bought homes there. If we moved into that area, and Verhaus Halfway House was already there, like they were, would it be right for me to go to them and say, "We want you out of here"? No, they were there first.
Okay.
We were there first.
Our time's up, ma'am. Thank you.
But thank you. And everyone didn't get a notice that this was in the—
I was going to, I wanted to ask you a question, and that was, did you receive notice?
Yes. I did.
You did receive notice of the, of the planning and zoning hearing?
Yes. I thought what it was, though, was it was going to be for a business like CCAH. But they were in, I guess, under a special permit.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So you received notice of this zoning?
I did. We did. Oh, of today? No, I had no idea.
No. The meeting that was held, the planning and zoning meeting?
The first one.
You did receive the proper notice of that?
I did.
Okay.
I did.
But Ms., Ms. Birch did—
Well, actually, I didn't. My husband did, but he didn't, he doesn't, he can't read anymore. And so it kind of got to where I didn't, I didn't know what was going on.
Sure.
And I'm sorry.
No. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, ma'am. Marion Weaver?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Don't move down. You don't have to stand on your tippy-toes. Don't move down, do you?
My name's Marion Weaver. I live at 16 Manzanita Street, just walking distance from the old CC, CCAH. I'm nervous. And I very much oppose rezoning it to commercial. I think a special use, R1, is great. I think it's completely compatible with the kind of nice, quiet residential neighborhood we have. But near as I can tell, no one in that area wants to have bars, restaurants, or just basically any old kind of thing that you want to have there. And I pretty much agree with everyone who's been here. We want to keep it quiet. We want to keep it peaceful. And, you know, it's a very good neighborhood, you know? People are very quiet and peaceful and get along with each other. I think a drug rehab, or a bar, or anything like that's a terrible idea. Also, I did not receive notice of this meeting. And I've lived in that neighborhood for four-years.
Are you within 300 feet?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yeah. Anyway, that's all I had to say.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else? Mr. Charlie? Yeah, you're not, I'm guessing you're not speaking against it, though. Yes, for clarification purposes, absolutely, please.
First, I'd like to apologize to the gentleman who left the room. He probably didn't hear what I said. I didn't say seven-years, I said several-years. And the property, there has been someone using the property. Granite Construction has been doing a large project near the border, and they were renting the facility as office space and sleepover space for about eight months. That was the main activity. But since this organization has changed its name to Premier Alliances, and moved to Sierra Vista where their offices are, that space hasn't been occupied as a residential space, or as light manufacturing, or as retail. All of those are granted under the special use permit. So I just want to make that clear. The other thing I'd like to make very clear to anyone who has this misconception, there is absolutely no financial offer for this property. You have to believe that when you look around at the Safeway Plaza, and you look at some of the other buildings that we have in Bisbee, it's very difficult to sell a large piece, or even rent a large commercial property. So we do not have offers on the table, and it is not being represented by any realtors. That's the truth. What we would like more than anything with that property, and speaking for Premier Alliances, it's that it be used for the, for what it was designed for. That's what we would like. And we are trying to find someone to use it for that purpose. We no longer host clients who need residences. So that part of our business no longer exists. We store active participants on Fort Wachukka. We handle their landscaping. And at the Border Patrol Station, we handle all of their janitorial services. And these are specifically jobs for people with disabilities. So our mission hasn't changed. The name has changed. I know it's a little confusing, but it's the same organization. And I'm sure that most of you know that notices that go out to the public are not the responsibility of the applicant. That's the city of Bisbee's responsibility to send those notices out. So I still apologize that people don't get those notices. They are vital to keep the public informed on the process. And maybe some of these questions could have been answered at planning and zoning as well. As I said, we want to be good neighbors there, absolutely. And when you have a mixed-use program out there, and you have commercial next to residential, there are considerations to be looked at. And I would hope that by agreeing to the uses that have been listed by the city of Bisbee, and we agree to those wholeheartedly, we don't want to see a lumberyard put in there. We're not interested in a warehouse business, or a bar, or a restaurant. We want the buildings to be used for what they were built and designed for. And believe me, if you've ever been in those buildings, they are designed pretty specifically. They're not, they don't lend themselves to be something completely different without really being removed. And that's the value of the property right now, are those buildings. So I hope I answered some of the questions and some of the concerns. But if the council has other ones that have come up, I'd be glad to address them.
Mr. Charlie, one of the concerns, obviously, has come up from a number of speakers, and that is a drug rehab facility. Is there, I don't know where that came from. Is there something, is that a plan? Or is that something you can categorically tell them that that's not going to happen?
Only you can categorically tell them that's not going to happen, with through your, you know, by saying what uses can be on the property. I can't tell them that. So you can eliminate that use through your action. But I can tell you, there is no plan on the table, other than to get this property back into use. And that's the main plan. And we felt that the special use permit, although it was specifically designed for that remodel of that property, and it does allow light manufacturing, residential, group home, and retail. Those were the stipulations of the special use permit. So we would like to see it go back to that. And we're struggling with it to make it active, to tell you the truth.
Right, sir. Thank you. I'm going to ask the audience, I want to be clear about this, that, do we have three people in the front row that did not receive the required notice? All three of you? We have another one. I, I'm, thank you, Ms. Blackford. And we've got the gentleman that left. And all of you are within 300 feet. Okay. This, you know, this causes me concern, and, I mean, you're absolutely right, Mr. Charlie. That's not the responsibility of you or this facility. That's our responsibility. And the fact that it obviously hasn't taken place the way it should be, causes hardship on you and your clients, as well as everybody else involved. But I'm very reluctant to go forward.
Yeah, I'm going to second that and say more than very reluctant. I think, given what they said, I think the, they need to have, the Planning and Zoning Commission needs to have their input in order to make a recommendation to the council. And it sounds like they didn't have a chance to get that input from the neighbors.
Right.
My recommendation is going to be, refer this back to the commission, and then come back with a recommendation to the council after that.
Exactly. So what I'm going to do is, I believe we need to close the public hearing, and then make a motion. And—
Did you want to close it?
Yes.
I didn't sign up, but I would like to put my two cents worth in.
You can put your three minutes' worth in, ma'am.
I live at 202 San Jose Drive. My name is Shirley Dowdy. And I just want to remind everybody that right around the corner is Seventh-day Adventist School. This area has an awful lot of children in it. School buses stop very close to the CCAH building, and it concerns me, because I don't want any child injured. I don't know what the, what it's going to be used for, but I think we need to consider our children. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. And I did not get a notice of a public hearing.
Were you within 300 feet?
Pardon me?
Are you within 300 feet?
No, I'm not.
Then you would not receive one. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cornada, have we received any other emails? I should indicate that Nicole Mutes sent an email saying that apparently really none of the neighbors were notified correctly. And—
It's both from her.
I'm sorry?
They're both from her.
It's, they're from her. Are there any others?
No.
Any other phone calls, ma'am?
No, sir.
All right. I'd like to close this public hearing, and I would entertain a motion.
I move that we send this item back down, or back to the Planning and Zoning Commission after appropriate notification has been made to the, to people involved.
If I might, I think that maybe you want to say that you're sending it back to the P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning, then at that point, proper notification is made, rather than what your motion is back—
Oh, yeah. It's backwards.
Yeah. If you would, if you don't mind.
I understood what she was saying.
I, I know. But it was sort of like, throw mother from the train a kiss.
Well, this has been happening all day, so I'm not surprised. I move that we send this issue back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and that, at that point, proper notification will be given to the people involved. Is that better?
Yes. Do we have a second?
A second, ma'am.
All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by stating aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carried unanimously.
And Mr. Mayor, may I comment for Mr. Ward's benefit? If he doesn't have a proper database to send out that notice, there's a way to get one. We just need to, the assessor's office will have a fairly up-to-date list.
Absolutely. Thank you. Yeah, that's, in our quest for transparency, that's a very big, big issue. So, for, again, for those that are affected by this, I totally understand. I apologize as mayor that the city has not held up their end of the bark. Okay, we're going to move on to even more fun. This is a discussion of possible direction to city attorney as to litigation regarding plastic bag ordinance zero, and I'm sorry, it's not a zero, it's an O, 1314.
Mayor, you're skipping over four.
Oh.
I mean, I'll go.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. We have a discussion of possible, it's item number four, I apologize. Discussion of possible approval of the notion of intent to adopt ordinance O-1711 to authorize the fire department to charge fees to respond to calls for service outside city limits. And interim Chief Castillo, you want to come up, take the hot seat? I would indicate, which may alleviate a lot of the things, there has been some slight changes to this schedule, because I neglected to go through it as clearly as I should, and found that there was a couple of things that didn't fit, such as we don't have a truck company, and a few things like that. So this is brought into the Bisbee equipment as to what we have. And with that, I would turn this over to Mr. Robert Smith.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. There are times when our fire department provides support to incidents that occur outside of the city limits. And there are times when the folks that are involved in whatever incident it is are not city residents. When we provide that kind of support and service outside of town limits to people who do not live in town, we currently do not charge for any of that service. And so ultimately, what happens is, the people of the city of Bisbee pay for that. We believe that there are mechanisms where we can pass some of that cost on to the people that are involved in those incidents, and who demand those services. And we should do so, because the provision of that service by the city of Bisbee is an unfair subsidy to the people who live here. It escalates their costs. So this is a way for us to go to the user, and demand a fee for that service, so that the people who live here do not have to subsidize it.
Thank you, sir. A couple real quick examples of this. We had a response to the other side of the tunnel last month. Chief, I believe that we had ambulance and a, and the attack truck on. And as an example, that's outside the jurisdiction. The individual's insurance company could have been charged for that. The other incident which really comes to mind was a big one, and knock on wood, I hope it doesn't happen again, but some may remember that the propane tanker on the other side of the tunnel, again, went over the side, what, about, I don't know, eight-years ago or so? And that the fire department and police department were both on that thing for three solid days, racking up an incredible amount of overtime and equipment use. And we charged zero for that. And the trucking companies, insurance company would have been liable for that. We, last month, responded to double adobe on a house fire. So these are things that I've been discussing for, for a year or more. And this is a cost containment, which is doing nothing than providing us extra revenue, a revenue stream that we haven't gone after before, but that is Otis. So, questions of Ms., interim Chief Castillo?
If you don't mind, I'd like to say something.
Please, please do.
When we respond to any incidents, a good 90% of our calls are medical, for one. We respond to medic unit and a rescue unit. The reason we do that is, we initially send three people in the first response, and that's not enough, as it is, three people. The reason we respond to rescue truck is because it carries certain equipment that our ambulance can, can have, just on evil medical calls. If we have to break in a residence, we have bolt cutters there. We have every tool that you can think of. That's why that truck goes. I went back and I looked at some figures from 2015, 16, and up to date now. Just on, using an example on motor vehicle accidents, we had a total of 64 motor vehicle accidents in 2015. 25 of those were in city limits, 39 were outside the city limits. These can be anywhere lengthy calls, if it involves extrication. Sometimes we have to call a second unit out, depending on how many number of injuries we have. So you're going to tie up possibly, we're actually dumping our stations a lot, just for these calls. Depending how far out they are, we will recall backup from another agency, Frye, Sierra Vista, Douglas, or Tombstone, depending on what side of the highway it is on. But we don't charge, and I think, Mary, you sent me something, just kind of some figures of what you, I think it was like, for initial response? It was like $250 an hour, if we did do that. Well, with that, we could have collected around $9,750, just for that. Level-two response, I looked at what Chicago City uses, their level-two response for, is it serves as well as cleanup, material use, absorbents for hazmat, cleanup— it serves as well as cleanup, material use, absorbents for hazmat, cleanup. Anytime we have more vehicle accident, there's fluid loss. And we use absorbent that we pick up through Napa here. It, we charge it to the city, they don't charge, we don't charge them for it. The wear and tear in our unit, the pump, the gas, the foam, foam's expensive. On vehicle fires, we use foam. Extrication, as I said, that, that usually takes us out of service for a while, depending on how bad the accident is. And we've, we always charge if we transport, the ambulance gets the bill, but not our, our rescue. And like they were saying, anytime we have a major incident, we have to call in backfill to man our stations because our number one concern, and my number one concern, is the citizens of Bisbee. You guys are the ones that pay our taxes. So we want to make sure that you guys are covered in case another response happens within the city. Another example I got here, well, in 2015, we had a total of four vehicle fires. We don't really get many vehicle fires in this area, but we do get them. Out of those, one was outside the city limits. 2016, for the motor vehicle accidents, we had 53 of them. Twenty-six of them were outside the city limits, and 27 were in the city limits. Vehicle fires for 16, looks like we had a total of eight, four in the city, four outside. And as of today's date, this year, 2007, so far, we've had a total of 45 motor vehicle accidents, and 25 of them were outside of the city limits, 20 were in the city.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, yeah.
So we are, we are responding, I mean, it's part of our CON, for ambulance coverage, that we do respond city and county, but like I said, our rescue truck, that goes on every call, that thing is used every day, 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and it gets worn until our last rescue truck, we took that out of service because it's just, it's worn out. The truck we're using now is a squad unit that was donated by the Timby family. It's a multi-purpose truck. It's, we got, it's got foam, 300 gallons of water, carries all our rescue tools. We're very fortunate that we did get that truck, a donated truck. Otherwise, we'd be using a regular pickup truck, and it's very, we've done that before when our trucks go out of service, use one of our staff trucks. And it's very hard to put all that equipment in the back of a pickup truck, and then when you need it, you gotta unload the pickup truck out of scene or whatever. It's very unprofessional, and it doesn't very look well. My goal is one day is work on some grants to get a high-tech rescue truck for this area. We need it, there's a lot of transportation coming from Mexico on these highways, there's a lot of hazards, and a multi-purpose rescue truck would benefit the city one day. And recovering costs from these calls could help ben, benefit us in purchasing one of those as well, or something like that.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much for pulling up those figures. I had asked for some of those, and you did it really quick. I really appreciate that.
You bet, no problem.
Any questions, counsel?
Mayor, what about residential calls outside the city limits?
Like fires?
Right.
And that's what we were talking about, like the, the fire in Double Adobe.
They made reference to automobile, okay, well, automobiles mainly what you were talking about in terms of...
Well, that's, that's the, the, we have more automobiles than, than structure fires. And some of those structure fires are within an area that we have mutual aid to also.
That's what I was leading to. What is mutual aid? How does that affect how we can charge?
Well, right, right now, we have an automatic aid with Palominas Fire, meaning if they get a structure fire, we will send usually one of our backup trucks to help them out. Vice versa, if we get a major fire here, we have them coming as help. And sometimes they, they can get here a lot quicker than if we call for mutual aid. We have mutual aid would not go in, in San Jose. The problem with that is, them being a volunteer fire department, it's hard to see if we can even get people available. There's numerous times we've been in that area first on fire calls because we got a quicker response. Mutual aid, we have been called for mutual aid before, I think I've got some figures on that as well. Let's see here, in 2015, we ran five mutual aid fires, and this, this could be, someone were in the, to assist law enforcement, there was one assist Humphrey, Humphrey at Naco announced to assist in the drug tunnel they found. They needed our engine there with some of our breathing apparatus, we assisted, I guess Naco wasn't available.
Excuse me, I think that the question, Councilmember Dunn's question is, if Bisbee Fire Department, whether for an ambulance call or a fire call, if you're responding as backup to say, San Jose Fire District, or Naco Fire District, does the homeowner or the automobile owner get charged for that as well?
We have never charged for any.
Well, we haven't charged for anything outside the city limits, which is why we're here tonight. So the question is, is that a carve-out to the rule that we would, we would...
We, we could, even though they asked mutual aid, it's not like an automatic aid where you have a written agreement where the automatic aid is, they're coming regardless, and, and the payment is their trucks, their, their men, everything. It's just, they help us out, and we don't, we don't charge them, they don't charge us for automatic aid. Mutual aid is when they request us, if it's out of control and they say, hey, we need your help, so now we gotta leave, you know, our area which wasn't... As, as an automatic aid, we automatically will take a truck, only if we are covered, if we're out on inter-facility transport, and we only got five guys within the city limits, we will try to request off-duty to, to fulfill that service. If we can't, then that agreement under, is understand that we will not respond to that.
Yeah, if I might, I believe that under automatic aid, we don't charge, but under mutual aid, we do.
We can, yes.
Okay, so it might be good for me, this is, we're just at the notice of intent stage when we get to the final ordinance stage, to maybe make that clear in the ordinance itself, rather than it just be a verbal discussion here.
Yeah, and I, and I would indicate also that in the chief's example of them being called down for the drug tunnel because of equipment, that was something we absolutely could have charged for, because that would have been, actually, they were doing it at the behest of the federal government, and we easily could have charged the government for that.
I believe they, they requested, I think it was a breathing apparatus and a ladder.
Right.
And the people that it took to get there, and the apparatus.
It was during the day, and there, there was no one available for response in the Naco area, so that's why they called us for an engine.
Exactly, yeah. All right, sir. We can't take questions, sorry. But I can talk to you afterwards, or, okay? All right, thank you, sir.
Mayor, I have heard the question. I was curious in terms from a legal perspective, you says you respond to calls for service. What does call for service mean in a legal sense? I'm thinking of, you know, who actually call, makes a call in for a request for help? Is it a neighbor? Is it another car? Or is it the actual person who's requesting the service?
Could be.
And that then leads to then, a person who later can say, well, I didn't call for this.
No, well, actually, I've got, I don't want to argue. If there was a fire situation, that person does not have the ability to say, don't put my fire out.
Well, I'm, I'm just curious in terms of, from a legal sense, what does call for service mean? I guess that's the point that I'm, I'm raising, and, and is, is that something we need to be concerned about?
As I understand, a call for service is, is not a call from the individual who's affected, it's a call, it could be the 911 dispatcher who got the call from somebody who stopped when they saw an accident on, on the road, calls 911, and 911 does its thing and dispatches, and it turns out that the Bisbee Fire is, is a responder to that, because, for, for whatever reason. So that would be a call to service, doesn't have to be called by the person affected himself.
And I would say generally, the, the insurance companies are well tuned in on this. They, this, this is something that they don't like, but that, that's, that's happening. I mean, there being, other jurisdictions in the state are doing exactly the same thing. Other jurisdictions in Cochise County are doing the same thing, and, and certainly other states are doing the same thing. So the insurance companies are well versed in, in, in what this is.
And this would be true for like a structural fire in say, San Jose, that would be the San Jose Volunteer Fire District, would, in their district?
That would be an automatic, that's, that's, that's mutual aid. Yeah, yes.
And so that, that call would come through San Jose Fire District for our help, rather than directly from...
Well, in some circumstances, our people would get that call and say, there's a big fire in San Jose.
Correct, that's what I'm...
But we would, we would respond to that, and it's a, it's a, it's a health and safety issue too, so, right.
Yeah, I just, I was just curious in terms of how do you establish the, you know, legality of a call for service, you know, what is...
Yeah, I'm, I'm unaware of cases in which, like the insurance company says that that was an issue. They understand that a call will come in, and from wherever it comes, that there is an emergency that needs to be taken care of and paid for. Anything else, sir?
Mayor?
Ma'am?
Just for clarification, so people in our neighborhood don't think that we have coverage, we do have coverage in San Jose. So I, I know what you're saying, but people just hear, well, they get called out to San Jose. Well, we are covered under Bisbee Fire.
San Jose Fire District is what it is.
Right, but that's what I just wanted to make a clarification, because Mr. Dunn did not specifically state that.
Pardon, I thought I did, pardon.
Anything else? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the notice of intent to adopt ordinance zero seventeen dash eleven to authorize the fire department to charge fees to respond to calls for service outside city limits.
May I second?
We have a motion, we have a second. Ms. Cornato?
Councilmember Klein?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Councilmember Higgins?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dunn?
Aye.
Councilmember Lindstrom?
Aye.
Mayor Smith?
Aye, motion passes 7-0 unanimously. Now, item number five, discussion of possible direction to city attorney as to litigation regarding plastic bag ordinance. Mr. Hanson, do you, we have two people signed up, should we hear them before we hear you? And the first one is Jenny Druckman, is she?
Not here.
Okay. And then we go to Ms. Susan Blackford.
Who else?
Welcome, Ms. Blackford.
Thank you, Mayor, nice to see you.
Nice, nice being seen, thank you.
Takes me a minute, as you well know. Okay, you ready? Okay, good evening. Susan Blackford concerns citizens of Bisbee. Quote from Thomas Jefferson, "I place economy among the first and the most of virtues, and public debt the worse. This, my fellow citizens, is the foundation for building a great city." The August 17 ruling from the Supreme Court stated that whatever power seeks to exercise under its home rule charter authority and related ordinances must be consistent with and subject to the Constitution and the laws of the state. So here we are again, folks, four years later, discussing plastic bag ordinance O-1314. We are asking you not to go into executive session and have a free and open discussion as, as you have in the past about rescinding this ordinance. This issue, in my opinion, in the over 800 signatures we got in six weeks on the initiative in 2013, was about putting this ordinance for a vote of the voters of this town. This is all what it was really about. We all believe, and still do, that it is a tax, no matter what you choose to call it, and we should all have a right to vote on being taxed. The Charter says so, and so does the American Revolution. Remember taxation without representation. This ordinance has caused nothing but problems for this town and lost sales tax monies for over four years. But nothing we did as voters you seem to care about. Your, your ideas were always right. Then the state got involved with two state laws directed at this city. If you think this state will help this town in any way right now, you are mistaken, in my opinion. Why? You claim your rights as a city override the voters' and the state rights. Now, legally, this is, this is true. Do not push this little town into having its state money, $2 to $3 million per year, taken away. Finally, do the right thing and repeal this bag ordinance. And I'd like to give a shout-out to Councilwoman Anna Klein, that has been the only consistent person who's voted for three, four years for the voters on this issue. Remember, all your actions have consequences. Again, please have an open session, and if not, what are you afraid of that you can't discuss among the residents in the city of Bisbee? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Blackford. Mr. Hanson?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yeah, could you, my time's out?
Your time is up.
Okay.
Time to go.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I signed up for this.
Oh, I didn't know that there was another speaker.
Well, I'm the one that called you up.
Yeah, I did see you.
Did you?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, yes, Kate, I apologize. I'm just, yeah, yeah. I'm trying to, I'm messing with our city attorney, I think, really. Ms. Cato Daly, thank you, ma'am, sorry.
Cato Daly, Ward 1. Why is the state so obsessed with our garbage? Don't they have enough garbage up at the State House, do you think, to deal with? The hypocrisy of the state of not allowing charter cities to determine how they manage their garbage, while the state fights Washington's overreach is appalling to me. That our own Senator Gail Griffith crafted legislation so she could go after Bisbee is equally appalling. I wish we could live by principle, because by principle Bisbee should stand by its rights. But the state has put Bisbee in a very difficult position. Financially, we can't live by principle. Can there be a stay without penalties to Bisbee? If not, our city must decide if they're to bend to the strong-willed tactics of the state. If so, I will support those businesses who voluntarily support the bag ban. I am proud to have my own bags. When I go to Safeway, when I go to Ace, when I go to Sierra Vista, when I go to Tucson, I pull my bags out and say, no, I don't want your plastic bag, I have my own. I'm from Bisbee. Although I wish Bisbee could stand by their rights and for their rights, I will support the decision of the council, because it's a tough one. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now, I'm pretty sure that Mr. Hanson can get up.
Which slide do I get to make that more visible over there? So I can turn...
Um, probably...
How's that? That's pretty good.
Yeah. Number one?
Yeah, those two photo, yeah, that photo first, yeah. Yeah, I thought it would be, first of all, let me say that eventually, I'm going to ask, or suggest to the council that, that we go into executive session, because I'm gonna have some very specific legal advice for the council, that, but the first thing I wanted to do is, because it's been a while since we met on the plastic bag issue and the plastic bag litigation, that first I can just give some background on it, just to remind everybody of how we got to where we are today. And I thought the first thing I, I would do, though, is show a photo from 2013 before the, or, I'm sorry, 2012, before the bag ban ordinance went into effect. This is behind Safeway. It doesn't show it up as, as well as it does, you know, on your computer screen, but you can see that there's lots of plastic bags out there, and I think at the same time that this was taken, photo was taken by Sarah Meggason. She also, or maybe it was Jenny Druckman, took a photo of a crew of people, there was about seven or eight, including, I think, our current mayor, who was out there picking up the trash out there to get rid of the blight. And then fast forward to, to June, July of 2016, from the very same vantage point of, of the same area behind Safeway, and you see virtually no, well, I think there's one plastic bag caught on a mesquite somewhere back there. So the, the purpose of, or the main purpose of passing the bag ban ordinance, really, I think, has, has been realized, and I think the evidence bears that out. Whether the state legislators care about that or not, I do not know. But in any event, so in, in 2013, the, the city passed the plastic bag ordinance. In 2015, the legislature passed legislation outlawing, or not allowing cities like Bisbee to regulate the use of plastic bags. That legislation was flawed, not just because of the substance of it, but because of some procedural flaws in, in enacting it, and I had sent a letter to the Attorney General with the authorization of the, the, the council, saying the city intends to... the authorization of the council, saying the city intends to keep its bag ban in place. I think the legislature recognized procedural flaws in that legislation, so in 2016, they passed another ban of the plastic bag ban, and that time without some of the procedural flaws of the previous year. Also in 2016, the legislature passed what is SB 1487, which is the so-called state shared revenue law, the idea that if a city enacts legislation that's in conflict with the state, that the state can withhold state shared revenues from a city. The, also in, I think in 2016, and I'll come back to explaining SB 1487 in a little bit more detail in just a few minutes. But also in 2016, the council authorized to retain Tim Hogan from the Arizona Center of Law and the Public Interest to represent the city in a then pending lawsuit that was brought by a city councilwoman in Tim P., trying to declare that the state legislation trying to outlaw the plastic bag ban was invalid. We did join that legislation, or, I'm sorry, we did join that lawsuit, started to make some headway on it, and then the litigation about, from the city of Tucson, about SB 1487 and the city of Tucson's own law that the legislature had said that they were trumping, which had to do with gun, destruction of guns held as evidence. All that litigation just kind of ramped up, and everybody realized, as long as that lawsuit was proceeding, that litigation was proceeding, there is no reason for us or anyone else to go forward with anything else. Some things we're going to shake out. And that's what recently happened. The Arizona Supreme Court did agree with the Attorney General that the Tucson city ordinance, despite the fact that Tucson was a charter city, that their ordinance, which required the destruction of guns held in evidence, was trumped by state law, and therefore the ordinance was invalid. The Supreme Court also, the Arizona Supreme Court also decided some aspects of SB 1487 regarding the state shared revenue. In general, the Supreme Court upheld that legislation, but there's a big however on it, a couple of big howvers on it. One of them is, it was very clear that the state legislature was making this law such a draconian effect on cities that they'd all throw up their arms and say, oh, I'm scared, I don't want to come in conflict with the state, I'm going to back off, state do whatever you want to our cities, we're backing off. Fortunately, although the state Supreme Court didn't actually decide the issue, they hinted very strongly that one of the ways that the legislature tried to make the effects so draconian on cities, the state Supreme Court said, not really deciding this, but we don't think we'd like this aspect of it. And that aspect of it is this, the, in SB 1487, if it says, it says if the state Attorney General says an ordinance may violate state law, then the Attorney General needs to take that case directly to the Supreme Court for a decision. But meanwhile, the city has to post a bond in the amount of the state shared revenue the city would lose. And of course, no bond, you'll probably never find a bonding company that would ever put up a bond for that amount of state shared revenue. Seriously, it's, it would be like game over, is what it would be. And that's where the Supreme Court, state Supreme Court, without actually deciding it, said that we don't really need to address the bond issue here, but it seems questionable. And the way the Supreme Court got away with not deciding the bond issue is because the city of Tucson, at the beginning of this litigation, suspended its ordinance until the Supreme Court decision came out, and the Attorney General honored that. And the Attorney General honored that maybe because they were, since the ordinance was suspended, they didn't see any reason to enforce the bond requirement, but also, I suspect, the Attorney General knew that if they really pressed that bond issue with the Supreme Court, they were likely to lose it. Just speculation, but that's my guess. And then the second, so a lot of the fear from SB 1487, I think, might be a little bit overblown. But nevertheless, SB 1487 does remain good law in Arizona for right now, and so we come down to the issue of what the city should do with its plastic bag ordinance. And I'll remind everybody that right now, there is, no state legislator has done what you need to do to trigger SB 1487, which is to refer our plastic bag ordinance to the Arizona Attorney General. There was noise from one legislator once upon a time of doing that, but she didn't follow through with it. And so, anyway, I think that's about as much as I want to say during the public session. As I said, I do have some specific legal advice I'd like to give to the council, but I think that that would be most appropriate in executive session. Are there any questions that I might be able to address in executive session, or in open session before we entertain an executive session?
Nope.
Yes? Do you see a difference in terms of, again, how we dispose of arms versus how we dispose of garbage, as being separate issues, I guess, under the charter?
That's one of the pieces of advice that I'd like to give in executive session, rather than an open session.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move that we go into executive session to discuss what the.